I mean, I was hoping no. Um, that's my personal opinion, and I don't feel like pulling twenty grand on this. But I do feel like Brian should.
Yeah. And actually, we we offered that olive branch to them.
And then they come back with this, and they want an extra fifteen on top of it.
Eight people Brian with the lien in the property, he's like, we were trying to solve this war. Like, what's going on?
I agree, because I don't see economic value for the park.
I don't either.
Every power you're buying owns her.
And then there was the fact that.
It's your value, not economic value, right?
There's uh, the decking, the decking hasn't been done to it. You know, that was part of the original estimate. No.
Four bucks, they took some money, let it go in the first place, so it's like, well, why would I give you more?
Well, it started at first time.
Wait, you've never had a teenager, have you?
You're gonna find the answer to that.
Change? Yeah. So we're fifteen minutes over.
Yeah, I've got the record it started, so the time I can't get a hold of the rest.
So the boy just wanna close meetings here. Chris is not here, is he a co-chair?
Well, kind of like Chris Candy, the chair, she's a hired.
He can't be the chair.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, he was only open, so. One of you guys wanna make a motion to just shut the meeting down, since UBR ain't getting any questions?
Or do you wanna make a list of questions to scroll to them, since they're not in attendance?
Yep.
To be brought up at the next meeting?
Oh, we had this meeting today, so they could go?
This is, this is, this is bad for that, Brian was still at one standing, or more for Brian, so. Yeah.
So Brian's gonna have to wait another.
Our next one.
Until they show him to the meeting?
I guess.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's unfortunate.
They're not doing Brian any favors.
No.
Well, he didn't come either, did he?
No.
Fair enough.
Well. If they want their mean move, obviously we're needs with just Brian's information on it, I mean, for me anyways, nothing extra, less than, you know.
For that dollar figure.
Just for that eighty-five, I think eighty-five, he's never wrong on this, yeah, eight, this is eighty-five. If they want something, if they want the lien removed, if they want something extra, it's gonna be separate than this.
So you wanna proposal showing the request?
For Brian.
Of eighty-five hundred?
Yep.
For Brian only?
Nothing extra, no return to dash. If they want something separate.
Additional funds?
They can come to us with their own.
Require a separate proposal.
Right.
And so, am I misunderstanding some aspect of this, when we're only looking to cover Brian and not Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Why is that?
There's no request. It was only a call.
Oh, I guess I'm, I don't realize that there would need to be a formal request, because I thought we were going back to all of the previous grants where we didn't have court.
I don't wish you a grant approval.
This is the one that.
This is the original grant.
That's the original grant that was.
Well, that's, that's, I think there's some misunderstanding.
Yeah, I'm confused on that too, I thought.
I think maybe with you got the knowledge, maybe you should like, maybe bring everybody up to speed of how that came about.
Yeah, I think Scotty, you were the only member of the board at that time, or the E- E- EDC board.
So it was, I I didn't go to any of the the selectmen's meetings.
Because I remember I s- I think I sat in on this one, and we said, okay, sure, and then it goes to the select board meeting.
Right.
And then, we don't get correspondence back exactly what happens.
Yeah, there were a couple groups that had to be jumped through, whatever. And then, it's, see, I'm not, I I'm probably ignorant of the the more of the ins and outs of what happened after that. But it falls in line, for me, it falls in line with the previous, you know, grants that that weren't done properly. So I thought we were just going back to all of the grants that weren't done properly, and getting them up up to snuff. Just as a matter of course, each grant that, well, that, that was what was gonna happen in the last meeting.
Correct, if I'm wrong, everybody felt like we just wanted to cover the eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, no, there was no talk of the other.
Yeah.
We, that's why.
Why didn't we order them back and vote?
Brian was here, Jean was not, it's, if that says anything, like, Brian was here, and we talked about covering him, and if Jean was here, making the same case, then we would have had that conversation too.
She had a grant approved by the boards, so maybe we went right, and then second voted and approved those funds as well?
We wanted to see a maintenance plan.
A contingent.
Yeah.
And the original amount.
So then really.
So it didn't get the thumbs up?
No.
You gotta, we need more.
Well, not, then the the TIF funds got frozen.
Right, yeah.
So, we really met, you know, we didn't have any discussion on the maintenance plan. Or, you know, but I personally, I felt like, you know, the maintenance plan should have been part of this when it came to you guys. You know, not, you know, not, here, this is what we want, and then no maintenance plan to it, then, you know, come and ask for. Cause that should be, the five thousand shouldn't be coming here. With this plan, it should be part of this, it shouldn't be two separate articles, because it's one project.
And and I thought the maintenance plan had been provided.
Not here, not on this proposal that you guys.
Not in a, not in the sergeant's meeting after the initial.
Not an acceptable one, they did present in the selectmen's meeting, it's a tag.
The minutes of that meeting would be helpful.
The.
Cause I wasn't there.
This is the only thing to keep D and C.
And this is the maintenance agreement that came, which is an additional request of use of.
And that didn't make it through the select board.
Which.
Then this just froze.
Well, then it's, and the project should have never have.
Yeah, and we froze the whole TIF at that point, we froze the whole.
And the original, and the other thing is, is I believe the original amount, the selectment approved it to twenty-nine five. I think it was twenty-nine five for the entire project, wasn't it?
It's quite right, you have to look at the paperwork.
I think it was more than just just what's in that proposal, I think the amount was like twenty-nine thousand.
Not what they proposed to us.
Originally, is what you approved in the minutes in August.
I thought we approved that.
That was the revised report that came back, I think, I'll, I can pull the minutes for you if you want.
Well, we got paperwork from the, in the box.
Twenty-nine thirty thousand, right?
Yeah.
That included solid gold board work?
Yeah. Aluminum. Still.
I think it was the August minutes.
Apparently you're a leader.
I apologize for my.
How can a park be this time consuming?
So by the.
I don't understand why they never show up.
Yeah, that doesn't help.
It's been going on since.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I think generally just misunderstandings of what was okay in what's passed and what is to be moved forward.
Oh.
Predictions, but, but but even with all of these, uh, I mean, with all of these misunderstandings, it's, it's more important, I think. Even with, it's more important because there's so many misunderstandings, to go back and and basically rehash the whole thing. We have the former committee chair that paid out of her own pocket, because she understood that, that the plan was ready to move forward.
She paid her pocket, she was in trouble that the project started happening before it was okay.
I'm not saying.
That's not her position.
I'm not saying Jean's heart, heart was in the right space, but she couldn't fight for the horse, and she's, she put.
In a bad, there was no money?
Otherwise, you would have.
That that's where the misunderstanding comes from.
And, in my opinion, she should pay Brian right of the whole thing, and she should be here asking for like, that is not acceptable. And I would, I would like to see this money probably come out of the library, uh, because she still has thirty grand.
How would you propose that?
And they might, um, that's, that's way too far.
I don't, I don't understand how you propose to take my library to.
To deal with it, this is an EDC grant.
But, so listen to this.
Proposed by the EDC.
She was on the board, right, and somewhere along the lines, something got messed up. Right, then she was fine, she, and this is where we told them they have money, but they let them win, because he doesn't have the money. So why should the people of the town community be paying for her mistake?
Which is the same.
And it's.
But it steals money from the town unit, but we are, we're, we're jumping to the.
And Brian is the victim contractor, so we are just, we are, we are sent just to pay him. Right, the money that he's owed, so he doesn't go bankrupt, because that's what.
I, I think what we're.
And if Jean wants her money back, she's gonna have to come and win, here, what do you got?
And I think what we're missing is that we, we've made an effort to fix the previous grant that worked right.
But I think. Come across the other grant.
Oh, there's a few more, there's still, the, there's the parks and rec, um, actually, I think one of yours is throwing that window of time as well.
It's just a matter of process.
You can't.
We're, we're going for sure again.
So.
Chris isn't here.
But you make a court, don't you?
I can't vote. No, I'm not.
You can't vote on his own, um, so the minutes from the July second meeting for the selectmen. Was when we originally discussed the approval, and it says that Tim asked for the possibility the town take over the park in the future, or will upkeep continue by UBR? Uh, Joe S. brought up, using dock sections to last longer than the wooden boardwork in last night's meeting, can the barn raisers come to talk to the board? Tim will approve twenty-five nine for Triple Park green space area pending the comprehensive conversation with UBR. And that was, David seconded it and it voted, so the original request amount from, to the board was twenty-five nine. Which is not in that amount. So where's the original proposal for the twenty-five nine, that would have been the July, where are you?
I'm on the July.
I just see it as a matter of process, we're going through a process with, with all of the previous grants. And I think we need to carry that process through with all of our previous grants. Each half of it, if if this grant was split into two halves. Like, I don't understand why we're not moving forward with the entirety of the first grant, to try to, try to make everybody aware, so the.
I have no problem voting on that, first one, but it's not gonna change the issue, it's still stuck, it's like, what, is it sitting out?
We haven't reviewed that, it's more. We haven't, we haven't reviewed the maintenance plan part of it, you know, and like, that maintenance part of it should have came part of this deed. Cause here it is, you're not only asking for twenty-five, you're asking for twenty-five plus fifteen. So that, I don't know how the board feels, but that might have, somebody might have voted no, it would have been like, I don't want to spend a lot of money, yeah.
Well, I'm trying to find the, um, the EDC.
Thirty grand's a good chunk of what we got left in here. And I can see a lot of other ways to do that.
Here it is, you know, knowing that the history of the property, you know, Janice last week said that, you know, it was one sinkhole when Judith read what the deed said. But the town owning the property where the maintenance ain't kept up, well, one sinkhole, if you guys look at what we got to build from Brian, it's not one sinkhole. You know, that's a crater we're gonna fill, you know what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, I showed up last, last week and said they didn't submit any of this, they were like, they didn't do anything, right? You know, why, so, what are we gonna vote on if they didn't submit it for them? So I had to submit another one, because I didn't want us to submit an old one, because I don't want to give them any more money, period, personally, than what Brian's owed. And I don't think, even first time I would be giving money, or I wouldn't, I want the town to take it over, because, because this has happened in the past, we've already given them money, and we've already told them to take care of it, and they haven't, now that's more. And it's kinda like.
So where did we land on, on the, was it forty thousand for the, oh no, fifty thousand for the, um, for your trail project?
Fifty thousand.
Where did we land on that?
We didn't touch that last.
But it hasn't been touched, that was, we've, it, it went to town meeting to get the funds appropriated, and from there, it's still waiting approval, uh, uh, a new proposal.
Well, you can kind of approve that.
If we put it in the trail plan, I personally, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable with, you know, voting yes or no on a large sum of money without the town saying yes or no. Cause that's kinda, like, I don't mind putting it in there, if the town says yes, and, you know, there it goes, but that's kinda, how I would feel about that one, but moving it over, we've gone through the back. Um, parks and trails is big in this area, so the money in there will be valued, but.
Yeah, so this for in-town park, uh, is less than a, a trail for fifty thousand around them. You know, it's, it's almost a symbol, we.
Well, we own that property. The difference?
Right.
And we didn't pay for it twice. And we have a deed that says if they don't maintain it, it follows. You compare your pineapple to an orange, you know?
They didn't maintain it.
I gotta ask you what's the money? Uh, and is there, is there precedent for maintenance plan on, on any of the other trail grants?
We've never had a maintenance plan. But we've never paid twice for the same project.
What do you mean, I'm sorry?
We never paid, we've never paid twice, we already paid UBR once for maintaining this property.
Oh, I see, uh, years.
Wait, years ago.
And and. Why do they want a piece of property if they don't maintain it? So they gotta have something to say, well, we got a few pieces of property, you wanna donate a little money to us, even though nobody drove to it and said, holy shit, I won't let my goats run while they, I forgive my kids. I don't, you know, eh, I'm sorry, but, you know, you go down there, we just came from there, you guys go down there and see what was bush hogged from that. It's pretty, it's, it's pretty, you can see the marks, you know, from before and after, it's pretty apparent, they didn't, you know, when.
The original contract.
Turned on the lead.
Said that it was just a sinkhole when Judith spoke out, you know, it wasn't just a sinkhole. It, it was, no, the whole property was no plan. You can see the way they bush hogged it down there, you can tell the difference, what's been, there, there's a stone down there, but Jones. And you can see that it was pretty much covered with brush, yeah, that was, I don't know if you knew, Jones was the chief of town, also sheriff, and he passed away.
He was fighting the fire.
That was more.
Oh, that's, yeah, I do know, I've heard that story.
Yeah, so then we, we just saw there was a stone down there.
And I didn't know it was a stone.
Yeah, you can see with the. With the footprint from all the brushes, so it wasn't, it wasn't anything.
No, 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 no. Well, as far as Brian's balance goes, like, if you get to the other lens, you want the property, you can't get it with the lien on there. There's no mechanism.
What's that?
You can't, the town can't get the property with the lien on there.
We, we often pay.
No, I think, so that's kinda, yeah, settling that is make sense in any direction, you know what I'm saying?
We often pay, pay the lien off, right, if, uh, they signed it over to us.
Or you just tell Brian to foreclose on it, and then, buy it from him, yeah. Yeah, that'd take about seven years, but. Yeah, we're trying to speed it up.
We can't even, we can't even give Brian his eighty-five without the barn raisers here?
I don't know, it's.
So we vote yes and yes, but the barn raisers will say they're gonna pay eighty, and then we're giving them those fifteen or twelve.
Oh, right, yeah, we can't do that today.
And as a committee, I think, I think we can propose, uh, whatever payment.
Yeah, you can make it, you don't have to, you can make up the number, again, just to propose. Make a recommendation of that proposal, how much you want.
Yeah, pay Brian eighty-five contingent on the lien being removed, that's what.
Yeah, just to get that, that credit.
The, to me, the sad part of all this is the underlying issue is that. I don't know if this was done for nefarious reasons, or if it was an honest mistake, I mean, the, you, you can, you can debate this till the cows come home, but the funds were frozen. And the requirements weren't met, and the money was still spent, it's an unfortunate situation that we find ourselves in.
Well, it should be easy, oh, it would be easy for us to agree that there was nothing nefarious about the confusion that happened on, on anybody's part. I'm willing to assume that you guys weren't going in a terrorist.
Spending, spending the money after the account, you were told that the account was frozen?
Well, we don't have all the, so there was, there was just, my understanding is that there was some colossal misunderstandings.
All the way around, I, I would agree with you, yeah, all the way around, there was just.
I, I don't, I don't really understand circle Jean all the misunderstandings, and, so UBR showed up last week and said they do not submit this.
We still don't know, we still don't know exactly who she's representing when she came to us with this, with this proposal.
Cause this is, this is.
Yeah, it's not down, right?
And, and you must understand.
But you be honest, and they didn't know.
We're gonna start a problem, and now they throw fifteen grand in there, like, sneakily, it's like, okay, what are you doing?
Well, that's the, that's the maintenance agreement that was presented to the board in conference, I think it was. Asking that the board fund the maintenance agreement and create a committee, including an EDC member, a select board member, a, um, a library, and a UBR individual. That would work collaboratively to create a maintenance plan. But the plan didn't really reflect, um, how the maintenance was gonna be completed, how it was gonna be, like, um, set by staff, what was gonna happen, roughly what the cost was gonna be.
I thought we were, we were pretty clear, like, so, and they were gonna come with something for Brian, for us to have a special.
Dude, that's, that's how I left off.
That was, I didn't, uh, think there was room for confusion on that.
Here we are. Did you, did you say something backwards?
How do we know Jean paid for this?
Yeah, there's, there are not her checks.
They're cashier's checks.
They're not your signature.
From two different banks.
Oh, let me see that, is that Google account number, is that the kind of thing? We don't, we don't even know.
Somebody paid seven thousand.
I wanna see somebody again.
Right, so then if we wanna refund.
I would have to probably present some kind of documentation, obviously, that those were.
Those people got paid from her.
Yeah. If she has accounts, or she wrote them checks, it's easy to document, I'm saying, it's, I don't know.
I mean, which is my career's career, but, this happened, had the picture of two of those checks, the invoice.
But then how do they?
It's just weird.
So how do they get a hold of that, cause that went to Brian supposedly?
This must be from Brian.
This is a receipt from Brian, it looks like showing that he's documented this.
Yeah, he's documenting, these, these haven't been deposited yet.
So he must have gave back.
There's no, so it's pre-deposited.
So what do we do, make a motion to, yeah, send for Brian? Send it back and say we'll accept eighty-five hundred to Brian on that fat from this? I don't know, I don't know how that works.
And then that would go to the select board, and then you could use that as leverage to get the property if you choose, or if not, and that would make us have done our jobs, to get it through to the next.
So like, there's only so much we can do. There's very little.
And who's Melissa? I've never heard that name.
Uh, Jean's partner.
My understanding was that each paid half, that may be wrong.
Can we, can we make a motion to only pay Brian on this, even though there's more stuff in here? Well, it seems like we need to just ignore a whole bunch of things.
You can make a motion to pay him one dollar.
Even though, even though he told us eighty-five, I don't hear a thing, we can even change that up.
Uh, yeah, if you look in the back though.
I mean, he's requesting eighty-five hundred on his receipt, so I think it may have been, it could be considered a typo.
And this is from December twenty-fourth, so you just did that.
But I was just worried though, on somewhere in here, it's, it's eight.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, it's, it's.
Even your balance in his records.
Someone put a lot of effort into this. Um, I will make a motion to approve eighty-five hundred out of this to Brian, Brian, my dad.
I'll second that.
Contingent on the lien.
Contingent.
Does that work for you guys?
Does that get us to the next phase?
Yeah, you sort of, you sort of a huge mess up.
Yeah.
You have to pay the guy, but figure out your maintenance plan, you need help with that, come back here and give us the property. And just is it bad luck for, for us and the, the grant program to leave this guy hanging with eighty-five, whether it's our fault or not?
It's not your fault.
Yeah.
Not your fault. That's, you know, that's what really irritated me last week, she was kinda blaming.
She's gonna rip into us. The new, the new people.
So when you're right, that's what I'm.
You know who you're talking about, Scott.
Well, you came out, you're the guy, Scott, yeah.
Gave him your number, though. Uh. This came out of telephone, though, didn't it?
It will, yeah.
So they, so if this goes to you guys, and you guys approve it, does that mean they get the full fifteen grand?
No, they get the eighty-five.
They get eighty, well, yeah, they can amend a recommendation from the EDC, you could change it, it.
So they can turn to that, and they probably want the whole thing, I mean, you can say yes, and it goes back and forth.
Well, I wouldn't have to do that, they have the oversight, they didn't actually go above and beyond with these, you're making a recommendation to only pay.
They wouldn't want that done.
They didn't get the check, but, yeah, they, that's.
They actually have to go before I can even cut the check.
But isn't there some awkwardness for UBR denies that they were involved in this at all, but now they're gonna come back with a.
And then like.
Yeah, I would say you did, it's, it's all of like, oh, you got one.
Yeah.
Well, if that's been the status quo, then what else would they expect? We give them money, maintenance up until this point, why would they?
It's just a.
This is, this sets that dangerous precedent of spending money, like. Like you said, I, I don't know who exactly. Supposed to be representing, representing the library, the EDC committee, do UBR, they definitely don't do UBR, because they said no.
It's straight out, it wasn't that. The library is an entity that has nothing to do with, with Triple Park.
Correct, but, but way, way back before this, Jean came to me, and she said, we'd like to have the, the parks and rec involved, in applying for an AARP grant, well, that's a children's park. The deed specifies that, and what AARP had to do with it, but Jean had a vision of concerts and stuff, and I just said, no, we have nothing to do with Triple Park. The library has nothing to do with Triple Park, um.
That's, that's the, that's the, that's the weird mess that they started, I mean, in all honesty, I, I don't know. Where this came about, I mean, if, if, if UBR owns this, and they claim that they had nothing to do with the original proposal, it, it's mystifying to me.
No, that, I mean, it has.
There's another word for it.
The original surrender proposal came through.
But not to UBR, right? What exactly owns the property?
This is, this was an EDC idea proposal, and I was not involved in the communications between Jean and the UBR.
I mean, that's, that's the puzzling part, when.
And I, I can't speak to, to any of that.
And neither can we, I can only speak for the original idea of July, so I guess when this was proposed, and then. And UBR later saying that, you know. They didn't approve that.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's part of the.
I don't, like you said, I don't know.
Some misunderstandings and to.
But as EDC is promoting to do something.
Jean tells the contracts to go work at Triple Park.
Shouldn't they?
That is what happens. Well, and to, to summarize.
Has to do with EDC.
I don't know, they're telling you that, that there was some.
No.
You know?
But that's. And then, and the town units, basically, we figure out eighty-five hundred dollars for Brian right now, and I think anything worth it adds.
Yeah.
That's, that's just.
You can, so how's it down?
It's one of the grants prior to, to now.
Cause it'd be what, like seventy-five grand that Jean got out of the dressing?
Before she.
I, I thought that's what we were doing as a, a new team, addressing all of the previous grants.
And we all had, yeah, but at one start clock right now, but. In general, one fifth, one to one.
Yeah, we were going to be solving.
Just as a matter of.
Off the base, yes.
Right. Okay, so if we follow the process for some of the grants and all of them.
Make a motion to do that. I second that motion.
Are we, are we following?
For you?
We just voted you in for.